Good morning, everyone. Today's August 20th, 2021. I invite you all, and I thank you all for coming to our village board meeting. If we could stand for a pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everyone. As you can see, we put the mask mandate back into effect for all our public buildings. So thanks for cooperating with us on that. We have a large agenda today, so we're going to start off with a couple of announcements that I have. Tomorrow night is the fire department's annual fireworks at Main Beach. I hope everybody can attend. We have a couple of special earlier shows going on. We have two bands playing. The Josh Brussels Band will start off at 6:00 PM. And then we have Nancy Atlas, starting at 7:00 till 8:30 to bring us up to the fireworks. So it should be a great night, hopefully, and I hope to see everyone there. The music series that we've been running on Tuesday nights at Main Beach has been outstanding, very well reception by the community. I've had many people come up to me and say, "I've owned a house here for 28 years, 25 years, and I've never felt like part of the community, and this event is just wonderful." If you haven't been down, it's just spectacular. There's like 1,000 people, it's families, it's little kids. I mean, it's really a fun night. So we have three Tuesdays left, so hopefully you can join us for that. Resident surveys are being sent out on Monday, and they are, we're looking for people's input about the airport situation, and we're looking for input about short-term rentals from our residents. So please look for those and get them back to us as soon as possible. Next up is our presentations. First up is Hugh King, who's going to talk about the roads we're dedicating for two past mayors of the village.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for inviting all these people to hear me speak today. Okay. First of all, I want to report on the walking tours that we've been doing. I want to report to the board that the walking tours have been conducted by a junior at Easthampton High School named Juliana Lester. Her last tour will be August 28th. There'll be no tour tomorrow because of the fireworks. And Juliana's last tour will be on the 28th. Then on September 4th and September 11th, Jackie Dumpty and Veronica Mazina will be conducting the tours. And the last tour will be on September 11th. And then in October, Richard Barron's and myself will be conducting historical walking tours for the Easthampton Historical Society. The three people doing the tours have learned a lot, they took it seriously, and they got better each time. And most important of all, they're getting it correct, all right? The second thing I want to talk about is the 100th anniversary of the town. I know there's going to be a presentation today, I believe, about the village's 100th anniversary. Could we reach out to Ann Bell, the assistant to the supervisor, so you can include them in these events, and maybe they want to be part of it? I was at the town board yesterday, and they would be receptive to hearing something from the village. Is that okay?
That's terrific.
All right. Now, the first person we want to talk about is Steve Marley, a mayor. Most of you who lived here a long time know Steve Marley as the manager of the Easthampton Movie Theater, but he was much more than that. Steve Marley was the fire chief during the hurricane of 1938. And who was the mayor? Judd Bannister, all right? Judd Bannister and Steve Marley are the only two that I can find that were the fire chief and then became the mayor. And then Steve Marley became the only person to ever defeat Judd Bannister in an election in 1954, okay? Now, what happened under his leadership? Fanny Gardner was hired as a policewoman to protect wildlife in the village. We could use her back here again with the deer, right? Imagine Fanny Gardner running around after the deer? Okay. They leased a portion of the parking lot from Arnold Bailey at the sea spray during Steve Marley's reign. He created, the Department of Public Works was created. There was a Christmas angel by Town Pond. There was also a Christmas angel by the Hook Windmill. They were put together by Ralph Carpenter and John Lanero and his wife, who are art teachers in the Easthampton High School. There was a tree put in the sheep pound in honor of Dr. Frederick Russell, who was a mayor of the Village of Easthampton. The firehouse was built on Cedar Street during Stephen Marley's reign. A paw. Now we come to the parking lot behind the stores. What an issue this was. Do you know there were 26 buildings back there that needed to be moved? And the Old Barn Bookstore didn't want to move, all right? So Mr. Marley had numerous meetings, numerous meetings about this. And what happened is he had to recuse himself because he had connections to some of the people who had buildings in the future parking lot. So he gave it over to Robert Rudishan, and he shepherded the rest of the motions to get the parking lot done. So on his untimely death, they named the parking lot the Robert Rudishan Parking Lot. But that parking lot could be called the Steve Marley, Robert Rudishan Parking Lot because Steve Marley had a lot to do with it, okay? And on September 7th, at 11 o'clock at the Circle, we will be putting up the sign because that's the street where Steve Marley lived. He lived on the Circle, all right? Okay, now we come to James Skidmore, James B. Skidmore. He took over after Mr. Marley died, unfortunately, all right? Well, when James B. Skidmore became mayor, Fritz Letty retired as the police chief. Now, besides being the police chief, what else did Fritz Letty do? Photographs, and if you walked in this building and you walk around, there they are. These are wonderful windows into the past of the '40s and the '50s. That was his contribution besides being the police chief. All right, they wanted to, remember during Kenny Westberg's time, they changed the name of the road Highway Behind the Lots to Toil Some Lane? Well, under Mr. Skidmore, they wanted to change Highway Behind the Pond to Lane Behind the Pond. Didn't happen. We still have Highway Behind the Pond. There was a new school built on Long Lane during Mayor Skidmore that was not in the village. There was much talk about beach grass, beach access, and beach erosion. The Head Start Program Building was built during his. Parking areas at Two Mile Hollow and Wyborg's Beach were taken. And the Luan shop started making summer uniforms for the police department. Where was the Luan shop?
Newtown Lane.
Next to the firehouse. It's now that famous historic landmark, the Monogram Shop, right? But I think that's where the Luan shop was. It's for Louis Alachi, and I think, I don't know if his wife's name was Annette. Definitely we got Luan, all right? Okay. Arnold Bailey sold the sea spray to Don Claus during James B. Skidmore's reign, and they rented the lot down there for $1,000 a year for parking. Parking stickers were discussed during Mayor Skidmore's time in office. This is like 1967 to 1971. The Board of Ethics was formed. The police began taking fire calls, and under Mayor Skidmore, they did not take part of Herrick Park for parking, all right? That was not done. Now, Mr. Skidmore has one more thing that no other mayor, I don't think, has ever had, and that's a poem written about him. You ready? Here we go, end with this one. James B. Skidmore. He stood at the pearly gates, his face was worn and old. He meekly asked the man of fate, admission to the fold. "What have you done, St. Peter asks, to seek admission here? I'm mayor of a village down on earth from many a weary ear." "I'm James B. Skidmore of Easthampton Village. I'm tired, and I've had my fill. The gates swung sharply open as that old St. Peter punched the bell. 'Come in,' he said, 'and take a harp. You've had your share of hell.'" That's it. I'm out of here.
Thank you, Hugh.
Okay, I'm going to stay for the presentation of the 100, then I have to leave. Is that okay?
Terrific. So I just would like to say, I think we have family members of Mayor Skidmore here. Welcome, thank you for coming. Is there anyone here from Steve Marley's family or not? All right, so we are going to do these dedications of the streets next Saturday at 2:00 PM. We're going to be dedicating the Dune Mirror Lane to Mr. Skidmore, and that'll be 2:00 on the 28th. And then we're doing the Circle on September 7th. Mrs. Marley, contact me, she'll have her family here then, so we're going to do that on the 7th. So if you can join us, it's 2:00 on both days, it would be appreciated. Thanks. We're going to change things up a little because we have a lot of public hearings, and I'm going to ask the president of the Village Foundation to speak about the centennial, and then we're going to skip the rest of the presentations, and we're going to go right to the public hearings. And then we'll go back to our presentations after the public hearings, just to let people get on their day. All right, thanks. Morning, Brad.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to give the board and the public an update on the foundation, the Easthampton Village Foundation, which the board authorized several months ago. We've received our 501(c)(3) status as a public charity about three weeks ago. Since that time, we have commitments or have raised approximately a quarter million dollars. We are funding the centennial with some of that money, and the rest of the money is going to be going towards the park. What I would like to do is go through some of the events for the centennial, if I may. The centennial is going to be September 24th through the 26th. It's starting at 11:00 AM on Friday, the 24th, with a time capsule and the blessing of the village. So the mayor, board of trustees, and religious leaders will start off the centennial with the blessing of the village for the next 100 years and bury a time capsule to be opened 100 years from that day. We're going to have historical discussions in the park at 2:00 PM, and there'll be several people, including Mr. King. Thank you very much for your, Mr. King, Ms. Lester, and others, talking about the history of the village. All of the events are open to the public and free of charge. On Friday night, there will be a gala, that will be a paid event, that will be at Maidstone Club. It'll be the Roaring Twenties Dress to Impress Gala and Casino Night. All proceeds will go to Herrick Park and the Easthampton Village Foundation. For the new construction of Herrick Park, there will be tickets to the public will go on sale on September 1st, oh, sorry, will go on sale next Friday at 9:00 AM. You can go to easthamptonvillage.org/centennial for information. On Saturday, we'll have a children's fair at 9:00 AM at Herrick Park. We'll have rides, carousel, slides, and other things for the children. All rides will be free, open to the public for anyone to come. On Saturday, we'll also have the Centennial Parade at 11:00 AM. Thank you, Chief Turza, for coordinating a lot of the events at the parade and a lot of the organizations. Let's see, what other? We have a music festival at 2:00 PM. We will announce on September 1st what bands will be there. That will be from 2:00 to 9:00 PM. We have also asked local restaurants and local food trucks to come so people can get lunch, can get dinner, and listen to some wonderful music. On Sunday morning, we will have a classic car show, also free admission for anyone that wishes to come, and that will be at 11:00 AM. And they will cap off the weekend at 4:00 PM with a Maidstone versus Bonneker softball game in Herrick Park, open to the public for people to come out and watch. The fire department will also do a barbecue, and so there'll be hot dogs available. I want to thank the mayor, the trustees, and the department heads from the fire department, DPW, the police department, and EMS. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
You've got it.
Great job, you guys. Everybody's doing a great job with this. The one thing I did forget to announce was Saturday, yeah, tomorrow, is the Artist-Writers Game at Herrick Park. Another fun event, if you can come out and join that. It should be a nice afternoon. All right, so we're going to skip the other presentations, June, and we're going to get, can we do a roll call?
Sure. Mayor Jerry Lawson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Chris Minardi.
Present.
Trustee Arthur Graham.
Here.
Trustee Rose Brown.
Here.
Trustee Sandra Melendez.
Present.
Administrator Marcos.
Here.
Village Attorney Vincent Mazina.
Present.
DPW Superintendent David Collins.
Here.
Fire Chief Jerry Turza.
Present.
Fire Marshal Ken Cullen. Building Inspector Tom Priato.
Present.
Planner Billy Hayjack.
Present.
Police Chief Michael Tracy.
Present.
All right. Thank you, and June, let's do the first public hearing.
introductory number 16-2021, proposed amendments, Chapter 278 zoning, in reference to nonconforming buildings, structures, uses, and lots, Section 1 legislative purpose and intent. This legislation is intended to provide for permitted enlargements, reconstruction, structural alterations, restoration, or repair of nonconforming buildings, structures, uses, and lots. The current code language has caused confusion and/or prohibited both repair, reconstruction, and gradual conversion of such uses to conforming uses.
All righty, is there anyone who would like to be heard on this? Could you step up, Joe? Just tell us who you are and where you're from, that'd be great.
Good morning. I'll try to do this without fogging up my reading glasses.
Impossible, trust me.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and the village board. I have comments on a bunch of the zoning actions before us, so I'll just do a preamble first, and then I promise you I will not read it again for the subsequent items. My name is Joseph B. Rose. I'm a longtime resident, lifelong resident of the village. I was married here, my children were raised here, I'm a homeowner in the village, as are my parents, brother, sister, and a large extended family of cousins and many generations. In addition to my personal attachment to the village, I have a professional background relevant to today's deliberations, having served for a decade as the chairman of the New York City Planning Commission and director of the Department of City Planning for the city of New York. I've also served as chairman of the Community Planning Board for Midtown Manhattan and as a board member of the Hudson River Park Trust, the Group for the East End. I currently sit on the board of the Urban Land Institute, the Dean's Council of the Yale School of Architecture, and the Village ZBA. I've worked for decades as a real estate developer with experience in a wide variety of project types. The village, as you know, is nearly 400 years old and is by everyone's acknowledgement among the most beautiful and environmentally distinctive communities in the nation. People come from all over the world to enjoy this extraordinary place, and that it retains its distinctive character is actually amazing given all the forces that we confront. We owe a great deal of debt to the preceding generations who've taken such good care of the village, and certainly as we approach changes to our land use regulations, we'd do well to adhere to the Hippocratic Oath's admonition to first do no harm. While the village is a wonderful place, it's also true that our land use regulatory regime is a mess. In my brief stint on the ZBA so far, I've witnessed the impact of confusing regulations, inconsistent enforcement, cynical disregard of the law, and frayed confidence in the integrity of the system, which can only result in unnecessary tension and conflict among neighbors. And I applaud you, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the village board for being willing to tackle some of these issues. It's urgent and overdue. I appear today to put my shoulder to the wheel to help in some of the deliberative process regarding these important matters. The matters are complex, and a few core principles I just want to call out are worth keeping in mind. Number one is the law of unintended consequences, which dictates that whether or not you achieve what you're trying to achieve, you're guaranteed to also have other impacts that you, that we may not have contemplated. Number two is the largely irrelevant issue of nominal fines in a community that faces the kind of economic forces and virtually unlimited wealth that characterizes some aspects of the village. C is the legal requirement for careful study and analysis of actions which might cause significant impact, and also the benefit of deliberation and incremental steps. Sorry, that's the preamble, you will not hear it again. I apologize for the length. Here are comments in regard to 16-2021. The amendment regarding alterations and repairs to nonconforming buildings containing conforming uses makes good sense, as long as it does not apply to use changes, especially those being proposed under number 192021. Because taken together with the kind of interpretive gymnastics we sometimes see, these provisions could cause problems with nonconforming structures not now used for residential purposes. For example, converting or altering a nonconforming garage to an accessory residential use should be prohibited within the text of this amendment. Also, the law should specifically forbid changes to a nonconforming building or structure that would increase the amount of that structure's floor area that lies within a required setback area. I think as currently written, the proposed law is ambiguous on this point. I'll submit the testimony in writing so you have these provisions. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else? Board members? All right, can I have a motion to close?
So move.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Our hearing is closed. Next, June.
Introduction number 17-2021, proposed amendment to Chapter 278 zoning to repeal certain limitations on permitted gross floor area. Section 1 legislative purpose and intent, this legislation is intended to repeal previously enacted restrictions on gross floor area. 13, one family and two families attached dwellings. A, the maximum gross floor area for one family and two families attached dwellings as permitted in all residential districts shall be 10% of the lot area plus 1,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet, whichever is less.
Thank you, June. Any comments? Kathy.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name's Kathy Cunningham. I'm here on behalf of the Village Preservation Society of Easthampton. I'm the executive director. Not unlike Mr. Rose, I have a letter here that, you know, touches on a number of these things, so I will read this, and hopefully the comments that we have on individual introductories that haven't yet been brought up will just be, you know, combined in with that, if that's okay with you. I do, as a preamble to, we've been asking that the code be cleaned up. We know that there are really ambiguous pieces to it, and for the most part, you know, some of these things, I think Joe Rose brought up some really important things to take in consideration with introductory 1621, because that's, the problem with the code is that we've had all these unintended consequences. The lack of clarity makes it hard for code enforcement, and it makes it hard for people that are trying to build or develop their property to really understand what the rules and regulations are. But I do want to read this formal statement, and I have some things to submit to the board. The Village Preservation Society is a not-for-profit, member-based organization, the mission of which is to preserve historic structures, quality of life, and neighborhood character in the Village of Easthampton and its surrounds. Our concerns regarding the proposed legislation today are based on the established codified tenets of the comprehensive plan and long-held planning principles that have helped to preserve the historic character and the neighborhood character of the village. The comp plan and these planning principles have helped to preserve the broader community by valuing individual neighborhoods and their particular pattern of development as contributions to that local character. Our primary issue is the lack of process by which these proposals have been suggested. The codified goals of the comp plan and commercial district study itemize and detail the process by which changes to the code should be made. No study has been offered that demonstrates a need for these changes. We request, now I'm going to get into specifics, regarding the proposed walkways, which is 2021, that a maximum width of four feet for proposed walkways over dunes be incorporated because, to eliminate the risk that decks may be built as part of the walkways on the dune. Regarding accessory dwelling units, we request that that square footage minimum be raised to 80,000 square feet. The proposed changes in gross floor area and coverage appear to accommodate the accessory dwelling unit proposal and should be considered together. The comprehensive plan specifically recommends that accessory buildings on residential lots be diminished in size. The proposed legislation has some errors in language that need correction. There's no term ground floor area, it should be gross floor area. And we were hoping that you might be able to provide a definition for mass transit hub and workforce housing, because I think those are, those are things that are lacking from the code at present. We strongly support workforce housing in the village. The need is obvious and great. However, we request an elimination of the proposed exemption from parking to encourage transit-oriented development. There is already a parking deficit of 2,000 spaces in the village commercial core, and no meaningful public transportation exists to provide commutation options for a transit-oriented development project. Parking must be provided by the developer. Everyone living in this community needs a car to get to and from work, and school, et cetera, and parking exemption for a housing development will push these spaces off the developer's lot and onto neighboring residential streets. We'd like to recommend that the town coordinate with, excuse me, the village coordinate with the town's housing authority, as that organization has overseen workforce and affordable housing development on lots in the town that provide parking on site, and it could be instructive, it could be helpful for the village's goal. As an aside, I think if it's the goal of the village to provide workforce housing, that we need a plan for that, where it's most appropriate. I do think transit-oriented development is a great idea, but we're missing a major partner in that, in that there's really no public transportation available. So I'm going to submit this letter and attach, for your reference, some relevant parts of the comprehensive plan and commercial district study and some of the SECA review, and I thank you for the ability to comment and wish you well going forward.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Joe?
As promised, I'll be very brief. Want to enthusiastically endorse this item number 17. The amendment's appropriate and important. The previously adopted amendment which this repeals was ill-considered. It was based on poor research and reasoning, was rushed through the approval process without a needed environmental review. Consistent and fair treatment with regard to GFA throughout the village is necessary and needed, and thank you for being willing to take this up.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to submit.
I would just like to just make a comment, the process. The previous process was the Planning-Zoning Committee, which we tried, and it is disappointing to try to get legislation through the Planning-Zoning Committee. We had what I considered a ground ball legislation that we were trying to get through with the updating the failed septic systems, and it took us six months to get that passed. So what I did is I instructed our department heads and our new attorney to go through the village code, find potential problems or issues, and bring them forward, and let's get them on the agenda to get changed. We did announce this last month. All board members had a complete month to research, do analysis, ask Mr. Hayjack for an analysis. None of that was done. So when we were working on this, we did do the analysis, and that's why we brought it forward. But none of the concern, I don't feel this is a concern, I'm not happy with the planning and zoning, and we're going to be making a recommendation to end that committee, and this will be the process going forward. this will be the process going forward. So are there any other comments?
Hi, John, John Tarbit. Just quickly on introductory seventeen, I also support the, the new law. Just for background, this was how the code read prior to it being changed, and so all it is, is going back so that all properties are treated equally, and there's not a, the way that, the way the code was changed a couple of years ago was to penalize larger lots by, by having a more restrictive code for those lots. So this is just treating all properties the same for gross floor area purposes, and at the time the last law was, at the time this was changed, it was actually roundly criticized. You had a full room of people who were against the, the code change penalizing larger lots. So I just applaud it, and thank you for considering it, going back to the way it was.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Bob Hoagie. I'm in my ninth decade to be a seasonal resident in East Hampton. I'm a property owner, village resident, and I guess I should add a large lot owner. I'd like to address section seventeen and section nineteen. Just say that I was quite surprised to read in the Star that these amendments were being considered. That said, I have not followed all of the background, but it seems to me that these changes, especially seventeen and nineteen, are unnecessary to meet the expressed public purposes, and would seem to me, at least on the face, to open the door to significant expansion in population density in the village that I think many of us think is perhaps already overcrowded in the summer months, and aesthetically will, of course, add to the amount of structures and decrease from the amount of green space around. With respect to legislative purpose, section seventeen really states, frankly, no public purpose. It just says it's to repeal something that was previously enacted, without telling us what's wrong with what was previously enacted. Section nineteen refers to housing for family members, guests, caregivers, has long been an issue for aging population in the blank, I presume the blank is, refers to the village. I'll concede certainly that there's a fair number, I guess the latest census showed there's a fair number, a fair percentage of the population that's aging, and certainly would support efforts to have specific housing, perhaps for the elderly as well as for workers. However, it seems to me that the amendment as proposed goes way beyond what's needed to meet the needs for the aging. It's hard for me to see how houses on forty, eighty thousand square foot lots don't already, in many cases probably have adequate rooms for guests, family, staff, et cetera, or that they can't, if need be, be modified to meet those needs within the existing coverage and zoning requirements. And I'd add that unfortunately, the elderly pass on, once you've got the structure there designed to meet the need of an elderly person, it's of course there forever. I also add that I've been spending a little bit of time recently, just antecdotally looking around at real estate offerings in the village, and I gotta say, find me a house that's less than five thousand square feet on one acre, much less too. There are a lot of big structures out there. I share the expressed concern of Trustee Graham, I think at the last meeting about enforcement, I just don't see how you go in and ask people whether they're, somebody in their ancillary structure is a guest or a child. That's intrusive, certain, almost certain to get a lot of call back, and perhaps unconstitutional, just as a practical matter, and yet that's exactly what you are, it seems to me, inviting. I think this is a right-wing comment about conformance with the existing village plan. As I read the plan, it endorses the zoning code, as it was then granted some time ago. But it seems to me if we're going to make changes of this potential magnitude, they really ought to be carefully considered, and the weight of evidence ought to be against such changes, or the burden of going forward, as lawyers would say, ought to be against such changes. Anybody proposing changes like this ought to have a substantial burden of, or duty to present the reasons for it, which, again, these really don't. Also, the extent, from a glance, these changes would affect about fifty percent of land in the village, maybe off by a few percent one way or another. That's not a minor change to land use in the Village of East Hampton. Next, the magnitude of the coverage increase, if my math is anywhere near right, this allows a twenty-five percent increase on lots of forty thousand square feet, and twelve percent on lots of eighty thousand square feet. Again, not a minor increase, it's not two, three, four, five percent, it's pretty substantial. My bottom line on all this is, I hope that most, if not all of us, would agree, we want East Hampton to be a country village and not a suburb. We read that the population has expanded, exploded, to use the Star's word, thirty-two percent over the last decade from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. These amendments seem to me to invite yet more expansion in population density, in use of public facilities, parking, beaches, not to mention the core business area, which is certainly, with my opinion, and I think the opinion of many of others, already overcrowded. So I would respectfully ask that the board turn these amendments down, if that is not to be the case, and I gathered from reading the Star, there was unanimity at the last board meeting, to say that, too, surprised me. But at the very least, I don't know what your process is, but bring it back for further discussion. Obviously, we have a lot of people, or several people here, who are very familiar with the history of zoning code and so forth, and I would think before we do any, ask, before we do anything of this magnitude, the village should explore that route. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Board member?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, Mayor. When Andy Goldstein wrote to us in this document that we all got, he made some very good legal arguments, but the mathematical arguments didn't work out quite so well. And he said for an eighty thousand square foot house, the GFA under the two thousand fifteen amendments would be seventy-eight hundred square feet, and under the proposed law, it would be nine thousand, which would be a thirteen point three-three percent increase. It really is a fifteen point three-eight percent increase, because you take the difference and divide it by the earlier amount. So if you take twelve hundred square feet divided by seventy-eight hundred square feet, that is fifteen point three-eight percent, and on the hundred and sixty thousand square foot lot, seventeen thousand square feet would be allowed, and currently, the two thousand fifteen code says ten thousand two hundred square feet, that's a sixty-six percent increase, not a forty percent increase. I mean, this is kind of maybe splitting hairs a little bit, but I think we need to correct the record on this, and as far as introductory seventeen goes, I struggled with it a little bit, frankly. It's, you know, we, we don't need more traffic in the village, we don't need more density in the village, but when you come down to how many properties there really are that this particular law covers, you still are keeping a substantial amount of open space on these properties, and I think a lot of these people tend to entertain themselves on their own properties, with their pools and their tennis courts and all the other amenities that they build in, and frankly, I am not against restoring this to what it was prior to two thousand fifteen. The only thing that I would state is, beyond that, is in addition to Bob Hoagie's comments and Kathy Cunningham's comments from the VPS, I think that when we hold a public hearing and people engage with us, for us to then vote on that, to pass that legislation later on in the same meeting, I don't think that's appropriate. I think that we should leave it open. The newspaper is going to be writing about this, people are going to read about it in the newspaper. People don't often pay attention to the announcements in the paper about pending legislation. They'll read about this, and I bet you we're going to get a lot more comments on it, and so I would suggest that we hold all of these introductories for a vote on them at the next meeting, not this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member?
I'd like to comment as well. We do have eight very hefty public hearings today with new laws that have profound impact potentially on the village, and someone mentioned earlier that incremental change is often very prudent, especially if we want to preserve the character of the, of our village and its distinct, unique character that makes it the special place that we all know and love. I agree with Trustee Graham that having eight hearings today of this significant potential impact and voting on it in the same meeting doesn't really give the, the resident and anyone who's interested ample time, and I would like to also, you know, have us have more time to discuss these. I'm also concerned about the potential development and the impact it will have on the population of the village, as the gentleman who just spoke, we seem to be busting at the seams right now, and our infrastructure is, you know, at its max of handling it, and I just want to make sure that there aren't any unintended consequences to some of these things that we are, are discussing today. And I don't think that some extra time will hurt anything, it will only help us. And your comment, Mayor, about the Planning and Zoning Committee, which I am not involved with, nor have I been, Tiger was the chair of that committee previously, and now I believe Trustee Minardi is, I thought that that was a very effective mechanism to vet some of these legislative changes. It also included, for the public's sake, department heads, and also every chair of the regulatory boards were at these meetings, and yes, sometimes change and getting to the end result takes a long time, but in that process, a lot of good comments and, and good thought comes out of it. So those are my two cents.
Yes, thank you, Trustee Brown. I, I do have to say, we announced these, we read these thirty days ago. In those thirty days, I have received emails asking us to tweak certain things, I've brought them, the ideas back to Mr. Hayek, he has changed things, I've brought things back to the attorney. The village board also had this thirty days ago. If they wanted to do analysis and they wanted more information, they had thirty days to do this. If I put it over to another thirty days, is the board going to wait till two days before the meeting to call Mr. Hayek? I'm not in favor of putting things off. You know how I work, I like to move quickly, I like to get things done, and everything we've done in the last eight months has been positive for this village. So I'm not in favor of putting it over, but we can keep going.
I believe that we have received a lot of comments, and I've looked into it, so I feel comfortable in making a decision today.
Sir? Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Raj Alva. I've been a resident of the village for over two decades. I wasn't planning on speaking, so nothing's prepared here, but I just want to point out, Joe Rose and I actually sued the village over the twenty fifteen amendments. I hate talking with this mask.
You can take it off at the podium if you'd like.
Sorry. We tried speaking to the mayor, as some of you might know, there was probably sixty people here opposing those amendments, giving feedback. The mayor waited a week and then passed them, didn't listen to any of us. We went to speak to him, he said, "I'm the mayor, I'm passing something." He said, "You're not going to sue me, it's too expensive." We chose to sue him, just because of the process. The comprehensive plan was well thought out, there was a lot of input from different constituencies put into it. The twenty fifteen amendments took the Village of Sagaponak and the Village of North Haven as comparables to compare it to. They cherry picked lots, they didn't even use my lot, which was impacted. They cherry picked lots around it to, to make their case. So at the end of the day, those twenty fifteen amendments, if they had a reasonable, consistent, proper data, I invest for a living, if the data they showed me was what I would have made a decision with, we would have lost our money. They did not think through it, they wanted to force something through. So if we want to put any changes through in the future, I would suggest we actually have reasoned comparable data. We haven't done any of that with the twenty fifteen plans, and nobody complained when the mayor passed those without listening to anybody, and I would just say, I think we need to take a step back, think of how those things went through in the past. The comprehensive plan was well thought out, and the things that you're rolling back on those, I don't have comments on the other stuff, but on the GFA rollback and other things, I think we're going back to a good spot, and if we have to make changes down the road, I think we should do proper reasoned analysis and data to do that. Thank you, and thank you for whatever, everything you're doing for the village.
Thank you. It's a very good point, the, we are just rolling it back, we are not adding to it, we are going back to what we were in two thousand fifteen, prior to that GFA law changing. So I think the gentleman makes a good point, that if we really want to change this and we see a problem, then we do a real study, and then we can make changes. But what was done in two thousand fifteen, in my opinion, was not done properly.
Yeah, I, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make clear, I'm not against voting on this particular rollback today, because as you say, I mean, I have a whole lot of stuff here, of research from the comprehensive plan, comments from the comprehensive plan, et cetera.
Okay.
I'm okay with doing this one.
So you're okay voting on seventeen? Rose, does that change?
Yeah, the others.
My stance was the same as well, I'm more concerned about the accessory dwelling, you know, workforce housing delineating that, you know, we're talking about the elevated walkways, and I think Kathy Cunningham brought up a good point, that we need to, you know, if we're talking about exempting them from coverage, we need to at least have a dimension like we do for the postman's walk, which I believe is four feet per the code, you know, so some of the other things I think we need to incorporate, but I am comfortable with the rollback of the GFA.
Okay, but we will be going forward with all of these today, on a vote, and so can we have some more comments?
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Colay, and I'm a builder out here. I've been building out here for over forty years. I was, I also have put over two hundred acres of property to reserve out here. I've put investment together on several large parcels and did a lot of reduced yield on those properties. I was involved in a deal in two thousand fifteen on a four-acre piece of property, and the seventeen thousand square foot that was allowed foot that was allowable before that rule was reduced to 11,000 square feet. What I haven't heard anything about is the ratio on a piece of property, a four-acre piece of property is anywhere between 160 and 180 acres, 180,000, sorry, square feet. If you were to increase or decrease the 17,000 to 11,000 on two floors, that means the footprint is going to increase or decrease by 3,000 feet. The percentage of 3,000 feet on 170, 80,000 square foot piece of property is miniscule. The other thing that I did some research on is a lot of the properties that were sold during 2000, the 2000s, where people had a small family and wanted, and then had a larger family, couldn't increase the square footage of their homes. And on the data that I gave you on 3,000 square foot of footprint on 170, 80,000 square foot piece of property, even on a two-acre piece of property or a three-acre piece of property, it's very small. It's miniscule. So the effect that it has on the village of East Hampton and the people, you know, I'm a, you know, full-time resident here for 44 years. So, you know, and I, as I said, I've done a lot of reserve, and I've done, I feel like I've done a lot for the community in those 44 years. So the effect that the law had on the people who had purchased properties during that period of time and wanted to expand them was pretty significant. But what no one was talking about, that I heard, because I was at that hearing, were the people who had these homes in their, in their families for generations and generations, and the, the effect it had on the value of those properties when they reduced the square footage was huge, because a lot of, I mean, I'm, I have my hand on, my finger on the pulse of people that are buying, looking to buy properties out here. Many of them come to me before they take, before they go to a real estate guy because of all the, all the homes that I've built out here. And they came to me and they were like, you know, "What are we doing here?" You know, "If I can't build, you know, if someone comes to buy this piece of property and they can't build what they want to build, they don't want to buy my piece of property, or it's less valuable is the bottom line." So it wasn't, you know, all the people coming out here to build these big houses. It was the people who had been out here for generations, whose properties were significantly compromised, the value was significantly compromised by that rule. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you for the, thank you for the opportunity to speak again, just with respect to the point of the timing of the vote. My understanding is that this first became, the first notice to the public about this was 30 days ago. It's the middle of the summer season when most of us are tied up with family, as is the case in our personal case, or on vacation, or otherwise occupied. My case, I was traveling until 10 days ago. We've had family here this week. I've had no real opportunity to think about this or to react to it. I would add that I was unable to find the text on the village website. I went to Village Hall this morning earlier and was provided a copy of the text. It's the first I had opportunity to see it. And who was there in the village clerk's office informed me that, quote, "Something like the system was not set up to put these materials out on the, on the web at this point." So I respectfully ask that they vote for its vote. You may very well have satisfied yourself as to the history of this, as to the need for it, as to the compliance with issues with respect to the comprehensive plan and so forth, but certainly from the standpoint of this member of the public, you've not satisfied me, nor have you provided an opportunity to become familiar with it, which as an informed citizen I would like to have. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Stowe, and I have a house in East Hampton, and I'd like to ask the board to wait before voting on these items. They seem to be very significant, and I do think that the public isn't as engaged as it might be in the summer months, particularly on the heels of COVID. It sounds like you've put a great deal of work into these plans, and I want to thank you for that. But I think it would be wonderful to have some news coverage of this and see what the reaction is, and perhaps vote after that, if it would just be one month or even a couple of weeks. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Can I have a motion to close the hearing?
Some will.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our hearing is closed. Okay, number three.
Introductory number 18, 2021. Proposed Amendment 278-3B, 2B to exempt handrails less than 12 inches wide, which are required by any New York State statutes, codes, rules, and/or regulations from the calculation of height of a structure.
Anybody from the public?
Hi, my name is Philip O'Connell. I live at 132 Newtown Lane. I understand why they, why you want to change this regulation. My concern is that it encourages roof decks, and if you have roof decks on the smaller lots, you're overlooking your neighbor. The sound travels down the, the sound cone. So I think, you know, I understand some people want it so they can have a, have a view, water view, field view, et cetera, but I would ask that you revise it so that there's a minimum lot size that this is applicable to, or that there's a, a minimum, you know, an additional setback, particularly for the smaller lots. That's my comment. And so I'd ask that you'd hold, hold that hearing open. Also, you know, and I'm not talking about the revising the GFA law back to where it was, but, you know, while you and the board have had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Hayek or do additional research, this is the first opportunity for the public to present their comments on the proposed law. So I don't, you know, to hear us and then just pass the law right after, I don't think achieves that goal of taking into account and digesting what the public has to say. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Joe?
Just briefly want to underscore what Mr. O'Connell said. I think the impact of this regulation is potentially problematic in terms of the encouraging or permitting either conversion or new construction of rooftop entertaining spaces at a, a height that could potentially cause very real interneighbor problems. And so it's, I'm sure there are places where it's, where it's fine to have, have that, but in many cases, to have it be an as-of-right conversion to encourage rooftop entertaining in the village could be problematic.
Thank you. Do you have any comments on that, Mr. Hayek?
Yeah, so I think to the two speakers, the way I understand the roof height law, that in order to have a flat space, you know, you're only allowed a certain percentage of your roof area to contain a flat, you know, a flat roof and still comply with the overall height requirements. So if you exceed that percentage, there's a setback, you have to impose a greater setback. So the idea is that if there are rooftop entertaining spaces, they are setback further in from the property lines versus your, your normal, normal house height. So that's a way that the law was designed to sort of protect neighbors, because we don't have a pyramid law in the code. This was an alternative to establishing a pyramid law. So I would just offer that for the record.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on this. I think rooftop entertaining on smaller properties is not a good idea. I think, you know, if we had, you know, an 80,000 square foot property, you could probably have a roof deck and people would not be concerned. I would consider allowing railings to be a exempt from the code for a non-habitable space. If somebody wants the ornamental effect of a roof walk, or widow's walk, as they're sometimes called, I wouldn't be against that as an ornamental, but if it becomes functional with people being able to be up there, I think you have to, I think you really need a minimum lot size substantially in excess of, you know...
I think, I think the intent of this law is that there's already going to be this space on top of them, and that the safety code requires that the railings be a certain height.
If it's to be habitable.
Right.
If it, if it's not accessible as...
Then it wouldn't matter what size the...
Yeah, but you, you wouldn't need any railings.
Right, but I don't think that's the case. Billy, can you speak to it?
I think the building inspector also, Mr. Mayor, can speak to somebody seen in the field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and board members. So the code already provides that space to be used functionally. However, the way it's been interpreted, and which of course through the New York State, a three-foot handrail would be required, but how historically it's been interpreted is that the handrail would be considered the building's height. So in essence, what's happening here is enabling the, the deck height, which we already have in the code, to have a three-foot difference, whereas, you know, actually, like I said, the code permits for this to be used, but however, you must lower it three feet to account for the handrail. It's always been considered as the height of the building, and I think we're looking to not count that towards that height. Like Billy had mentioned, there is an additional already built into the code for all lots that if you are going to utilize the 15%, nine, nine feet below your maximum height, that it steps in an additional six feet from the side yards.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think a six-foot setback is going to make a rooftop deck any more attractive to the neighbors, and effectively will create, by having a rooftop space that people could sit in, that's going to be effectively a massing issue for the neighbors.
But this law is not addressing a rooftop. It's just addressing the height of the building and the height of the...
Right. So if the height is 32 feet off grade and it's habitable, then you need to add three feet for the railings.
We need to have, that's what the other part of the code comes in with the setbacks and everything else. This law is not touching that part. That's my point.
I think it is. You know, I mean, if we, when we put that, the code in about the nine-foot setback from the roof, et cetera, and the 15%, you know, I mean, I saw that as potentially being a place where people would want to go and, and sit to look at the fields or the ocean or, you know, the parking lot or whatever they're looking at. I don't know that that's something that we want to encourage, especially on a smaller lot.
So let, let me address something. The way the code is written now, it is subject to interpretation by the building inspector, who can interpret it either way, quite frankly. You know, I think there's, it's a fair comment to say that there's sufficient arguments on either side that would form the rational basis for an interpretation by the building inspector either way. What is being done here today, and the board will debate it and ultimately decide it, is to codify so that it's no longer subject to interpretation, which does two things. Number one, the building inspector is not in the middle, but number two, the citizens of the village get the benefit of consistency because it's codified. They know exactly what the requirements are. So I'm not making an argument as to, you know, what's better policy or not. That's for the board to determine, but I want to be clear that, you know, the code should really address it for the benefit of the building inspector and more importantly, the people of the village.
Well, I think if somebody wants a roof deck where they can hang out, then I think the railings have to be part of the overall height. So that would effectively lower the roof deck by three feet, which would then reduce the impact on the neighbors.
Well, it keeps them just as close though, right?
It would keep it just as close, but not as high.
Right, okay.
It, it would be lower, and as we know, noise does travel at the higher you go. It would definitely be more impactful on the smaller lots as far as the noise and the massing effect if we were to follow through with this. So it is a consideration. Maybe we should consider, you know, two acres plus for this, anything under, it would be involved in the calculation, or not.
Any other comments? Okay, can I have a motion to close the hearing?
Some will.
All in favor?
We need a second.
Second.
Hearing is closed. Next hearing.
Introductory number 19, 2021. Proposed Amendment to Chapter 278-2-A7 to AD E Accessory Dwelling Unit. Legislative intent: Housing for family members, guests, and caregivers has long been an issue for an aging population in the village of East Hampton. One of the ways this issue can be addressed is through the legalization of accessory dwelling units. This legislation proposed herein represents a measured approach to applying the solution.
All right. Anyone like to speak?
Right in the middle.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't see you.
Good morning.
My name is Alice Cooley of Matthews-Curson Cooley. I'm here on behalf of my client, 13 Sarrazeway LLC. I'd actually like to speak in favor of the rollback to the lot coverage, gross floor area, as well as the accessory dwelling. Before I get to my comments, I did want to say, I think Mr. Rose and also Ms. Cunningham did a really nice job pointing out some of the ambiguities that exist, but in my view, I think they exist in all zoning codes. I don't think you can manage every single ambiguity that comes up. Luckily, the village is equipped with a really strong building inspector, and he can make those interpretations and has been making those interpretations really prudently. In terms of the changes to the gross floor area and the coverage, we believe that the changes to the 20, back to the pre-2015 calculations, those changes are fair and modest. We think that an owner of a large lot should proportionally be able to make use of that larger property. The addition of the accessory dwelling units is a much-needed amenity in the village and one that large properties can support. It will allow the elderly, infirmed parents and grandparents of young children to comfortably retain care and support that they require in their own properties with dignity and privacy. It will allow parents and grandparents to offer a place for their children or other struggling family members, a place to live on their property while the cost of living on the East End is out of reach for so many. It will allow property owners... It will allow property owners to offer living space to much-needed employees who may not otherwise be able to afford to live in the area. And it would also aid in retaining valued employees and likely lessen traffic burdens. In short, we believe this is a real solution to the problems that the community currently faces, and we thank you for taking a look at these.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Joe?
Can I take my mask off?
Yes, please.
It's worth going to the podium just for that, right?
So, this is a very significant and important action that's worth considering over time. But I'd submit this is the most significant of all the actions being heard today. And I just don't think, having looked at the materials prepared, that given the significant impact likely to come from this, that adequate analysis and material has been provided to come to the conclusion that this is something worth doing. It's a significant, almost radical change of the current land use regulations could dramatically increase the intensity of land use and population density and impacts on neighboring properties and village traffic. We need to understand how many properties are likely to be eligible for this kind of expansion and how it could impact community character throughout the neighborhoods of the village. I think there's no question with the adoption of this, there would be a significant expansion of building activity on lots that are eligible. And in addition, the restrictions on who can use the new structures, I think, are essentially unenforceable. It's been raised before. This one, of all the other, the actions, I know that there's substantial actions you're going to take today. This one might be worth holding for future consideration.
Thank you. Eddie?
Andrew Goldstein. My name is Andrew Goldstein. I think that the density issue that is raised here is a bit of a red herring. Because the law expressly provides that the GFA allowable to the accessory unit is a charge on the entire principal residence GFA on the property. So that if you want an accessory dwelling, your house is going to be smaller. What this allows is the way you live on your property, not how many people live on your property. I think that's an important distinction. The properties that will benefit from this are not in the center of the village primarily. And I'm fortunate to live in one of those neighborhoods, and there is not traffic there. And this is not going to create more traffic. It's an important step for the village to take. Cotages are not unknown in the Village of East Hampton. On Lily Pond Lane and Lee Avenue, approximately half the properties now have cottages. And we don't see a throng of traffic on those properties. Finally, much of the concern about enforcement assumes that we are a village of lawbreakers. And I'd like to think that people... I think we should think positively of our residents and not that they're... The effect of this is going to be a massive influx of Airbnb's. So I urge you to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What I really like about this piece of legislation is the fact that if somebody wants to take advantage of this, they have to then convert the entire property to low-nitrogen septic systems, which I think this piece of legislation lets people use their properties the way they need to. It does not increase density because it's coming out... The GFA is coming out of the main house. And we get to enforce more low-nitrogen systems, which helps everyone. So that's my piece. Kathy?
Thank you. I just... I guess I just had a question about the GFA coming out of the main house. So perhaps I just didn't understand this legislation when I read it. So if there's a property with an existing primary residence and they want to add this guest cottage or, you know, whatever we're calling it, and their... The proposed cottage would exceed the permitted coverage under this law, they would have to make their house smaller?
So the way the law is prepared is the maximum size for an accessory dwelling unit is regulated by the maximum allowable accessory building. So it's proportionate to an accessory building on your property, but it counts towards your principal building GFA. So the example you just gave, if somebody has already developed their property to the maximum allowable gross floor area for a principal dwelling, then they would not be entitled to construct one.
They would be ineligible for this. The only way they could put the guest house on would be to make their house smaller.
Yes.
I see. Okay, well, thanks for explaining that. I just wanted to make a general comment about the, you know, the depth and gravity of all these various pieces of legislation. And I want to start by saying that I understand that your administration came in full of vim and vigor and ready to make some change and that you wanted to move ahead on important initiatives that were identified during your campaign. And that's all well and good. And I think that there have been a lot of really great things that have happened since your administration has taken over. But I would like to say that the Village Preservation Society was never supportive of the old administration's way of, you know, that those 2015 changes, we didn't comment on them one way or another, but we didn't think it was good at all that the public came in and said, "No, no, 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 no." And the board went ahead and adopted them anyway, you know. So that's sort of the process kind of approach that we would ask you to take more time. I was here on July 30th when I believe these proposals were introduced, which is really 21 days ago and not 30 days. So maybe I'm miscalculating, and maybe they were introduced before that at a work session, and I missed it. Totally possible. But I would urge you to break that mold. Break the mold of the old administration that you have already done to permit the kind of public input and collaboration that will make these much more successful in the long run. We would like to work with you. And I think that there are broad swathes of the community that would like to take the opportunity to say, "Okay, you know, maybe... We may need to make some of these changes. This is understandable." But unless we have the discussion, unless the community comes together and says, "Well, you know, these are the things, you know, these are changes that we think should be made, and these are limits that we think might should be put on them, or maybe there's a middle place, middle ground for some of this stuff." I think that right now it just feels like a tug-of-war with the old administration. You know, I understand you're repealing that law. I get it, you know, I know how that went. I was here for that hearing. It was pretty appalling that the room was full. Nobody said anything positive in favor of it. And press no changeo, it became the law. And that's insulting. It's insulting to people's intelligence. It's insulting to their time and energy that they have come out to say, "You know, this is a public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to air the... To explain to the public what's happened and understand what the community feels about a particular initiative." So I would just urge you to leave these hearings open and give us another... Give the community another month. I don't think it's too much to ask. And I think if there would be any way to have a public meeting to discuss these, one of my main concerns really is that the gross floor area, the increase of the gross floor area coupled with this accessory dwelling unit has a segmented feeling to it, to me, because they're not unrelated. And I think that they should be evaluated together. So I know you've already closed that hearing, but I really do think you have an opportunity here to break a habit that was destructive to the public-government relationship and that you could really... You could do something good here. And I think that it's your intention to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, John Turbit again. So I've been doing zoning work in East Hampton for close to 20 years. And this is something that I have thought would be an amazing change for the entire 20 years. I've talked about it. We're talking about 1.5-acre lots south... I mean, and those lots only pretty much exist south the highway. They're not going to be in McGurk Street or Osborne, Sherrill. These are south the highway, 1.8... We're talking about $10 million lots. It's laughable to think that somebody would rent out the 800-square-foot cottage. They don't want that, and it would be illegal, of course. But literally every client who comes to me, who lives, who are taxpayers and voters in the Village of East Hampton wants the ability to do this on their property for multiple reasons. They're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on landscaping and caretaking. Their taxes are $50,000 to $100,000 a year. They want to have the ability to have a caretaker live in the cottage, which, by the way, those caretakers work in our local restaurants. They volunteer in the local fire department, ocean rescue. We have restaurants in the village who can't open for lunch because they can't find... And this is near and dear to me because I think we've all realized that the COVID bounce in real estate values has absolutely exasperated the fleeing of anybody who can... The younger generations who can afford to live here and work in our restaurants and volunteer. It's gotten critical. Like, restaurants literally can't open. So to the extent that a caretaker can live in one of these cottages and maybe volunteer in the fire department or ocean rescue or work in one of our local restaurants, it's a huge problem. I think as politicians, we're all... And as residents, we're all becoming aware of it. We always knew it was there, but it was a background, something we thought about. But it's gotten real serious. And this would help alleviate some of that. It would also just allow for people to better design their properties. You know, gross floor areas are about massing to some degree. And to the extent your house will be a little bit smaller and there'll be a little cottage off... One-story cottage off to the side, that would also help with massing. It just... It's just, you know, as Andy Goldstein said, half the properties south the highway already have guest cottages. And the ones that don't have them legally are converting areas illegally. So to the extent that this would allow people to do something that they're doing anyway legally, it would raise... It would be a construction boom. So local landscapers, builders would make money, plus property taxes would go up, which, you know, more revenue to the village is not a bad thing. There is zero downside to this, in my opinion. It's just something that, having done zoning work for 20 years, this is potentially one of the more beneficial things I see for the village that you could do to your existing code. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board?
Yeah, I have a comment on this. When I was elected to the board in 2017, one of the first things that came across my desk was this report from Len Ackerman requesting that we allow accessory buildings very much the same this law is. But they were talking about the R160 area. And there was a report from Nelson and Pope about, you know, what neighboring towns do, what... You know, the draft amendment that they published, and then a list of properties in the village of R160 properties that appear to already contain accessory structures. And there were probably 70 of those. I think that on a 30,000-foot view, I think having accessory apartments or accessory housing on large lots is a good idea. I think it's, for, you know, 20 different reasons, you know. I know Lenny, his wife was ill, and he would have loved to have had the ability to convert his garage into an apartment for the caregivers, for his wife. I think that... I'm certainly getting older, and I'm probably going to run into that situation. I know that on the 20th, the number on the square footage on the proposal was 40,000 square feet. And we talked about making it 80,000 square feet. And it comes in today at 60,000 square feet. I think that just picking a number out of thin air isn't the right... And I'm just assuming that that's what happened. They said, "Well, 40 is too small and 80 is too big, so why don't we take 60?" You know, why don't we do a study and see how many 60 and 80,000-foot square-foot properties would be eligible for this so we know really what we're talking about?
We already know that, Trustee Graham. If you would have called Mr. Hayjack during the 21-day period, you'd have these numbers.
For the public's sake, what... How many properties could take advantage of this?
The village has an interminable agreement with the town of East Hampton to provide geographic information services. And the town's GIS division had done some calculations for us and had decided that... Or they've determined that a total... So the total number of lots greater than 60,000 square feet in residential zoning districts is 488. We think there's roughly 1,800 parcels in the village, residential parcels. So that comes out to about 27% of the total residential properties that would be eligible, could be eligible for an accessory dwelling unit.
If they're not over coverage, correct?
Yeah, if they're not already over coverage or over GFA.
Or maxed out on coverage, I should say.
Yeah.
All right, so under this proposal, we're talking about potentially adding 488?
27%, I think.
Yeah, 488, you got it, Tony.
Yeah, and some of those probably already have structures on them.
Probably a lot of those will not be eligible.
If there are 160, there are probably 70 of them. So let's just say that we're going to add, you know, for a number, 350 new apartments that can hold two people each. So that's another 700 people living in the village. Seems to me that's adding to density.
See, that's where I disagree with you because the GFA for that structure is coming out of the main house. They could do it now. They could have those people living there now. And they probably do. So all they're doing is moving the location to another part of their property.
So let's... But they don't have... If they've got a... If they can have a 7,000-foot coverage, okay, and they have a 6,000-square-foot house, there's 1,000 feet of coverage that people aren't living in. So we are adding.
But they could add it to their main house as of right.
Of course they could.
Right.
But they're not doing it, are they?
Well, they might not do this either.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that this is, you know... I think this is going a little too far too fast. I am in favor of accessory structures.
I know. Well, you're in favor or you're not in favor?
What did I just say, Jerry?
You said you're in favor of accessory structures. So you're done with that comment?
Yeah, I'm in favor of accessory structures. I don't think I'm in favor of 350 of them.
So what number are you in favor of?
I would say probably 100. So why don't we do it on 120-square-foot properties? 120,000-square-foot properties instead of 60s.
I don't believe everybody, every single property is going to do it. And besides, whoever decides to do it is going to put in a septic and it's going to be good for the environment, so...
It's not compelling to me.
Are you finished?
Yes, I'm finished.
Anyone else?
I'd like to speak. You know, the one thing I'd like to stress that I support this proposal because, again, it takes it out of the main house. So if you can build 10,000 square feet on your property, as of right, the house could be seven, the other one could be three, or however the property owner wants to break that up. It is not creating more density. And touching on density, I would also like to, you know, express my feelings about... I do not believe East Hampton has a density problem. Again, our schools aren't growing, they're shrinking. I think we just moved our pre-K into our elementary school because the numbers are dropping. There's no traffic problems on the streets of the village. I believe the Newtown Lane, Main Street, traffic is to do with, you know, town and visitors and things like that. It does not... There's no traffic on side streets like... like Mr. Goldstein, I believe, addressed. I don't believe there's a water, or electric, or infrastructure problem that is going to be maxed out, that there's a couple additional accessory buildings in back of people's houses. But again, as of right, I believe these property owners can build what they can build. So if they would like to break it up, then it's a really great use of their property, as well it addresses our septic. Technically, our water quarter would be better. Second of all, I believe that it's a step in the right direction for, I mean, I don't know what you want to call it, workforce housing or extra housing, but it's something, and we haven't done anything in a long time. It's a step in the right direction, where Mr. Tarbet, you know, expressed that our restaurants don't have staffs, our, you know, our businesses can't find staff, kids, high school kids, college kids, just out of colleges, there's nowhere to live. It's really hard. And, I mean, there's no rentals in the village. I mean, you cannot find a rental in the village for $3,000 to $4,000 a month. It does not exist at all. There's nothing. Now, I'm not saying this is going to solve the problem, but it's something where kids, family members, caretakers don't have to travel through the trade parade, they don't have to do all these things, and again, it is not creating any more mass than what people are allowed to have as of right, right now. So again, I am in favor of this. I'm in very strong favor of this proposal.
But these won't be rental housings.
They're not allowed to be rental. They're for kids or family members.
You make it workforce housing.
I said it wasn't workforce housing.
Right, so how are you going to address the employment situation in the?
Well, I think Mr. Tarbet said it very clearly. You can have a caretaker living on that property, other family members with him could be working at restaurants, could be working at a local store. It's a step in the right direction. I agree with the...
Tiger, it's not solving the workforce housing problem that we all have. I think we can all agree on that, but it's something. It's where maybe your kids could stay there, and they might work in the community, or maybe a caregiver can be there where they don't have to travel from up the island, which poses other problems where they don't want to do it. Again, and again, when we come back to the 27% of the houses, you're taking 20% of the houses, and now you have to meet coverage as well. So not only do you have to meet the GFA, but you have to meet the coverage. So again, you know, out of the houses that already have the cottages, which are pre-existing non-conforming, people might have a garage, or a shed, or a god knows whatever, they're going to have to take something away, or they can't have it. So again, I do not think that this is going to be a, we're not going to see a boom of 300 of these accessory structures going up. I mean, I doubt we even get 100, to be honest with you.
I mean, you also have to look at the current accessory structures. The setbacks are less. So if you now qualify into this, you still may not qualify, you're still going to have to come back before the ZBA to get a variance on the property line issue. So it's not this big boom that you're going to see. Are there any more comments?
If you can just clarify, isn't there a benefit to the community in that you have an environmental benefit if you pass this? Because the structures would have to conform to the new septic, and they'd have to convert with this.
That's correct, the entire property.
So, I mean, if we're really concerned about the community, as I think everyone is, and in concern about the environment, isn't this a step in the right direction?
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is everyone in favor?
Yes.
Passing, Gary. Motion, I'm sorry. Hearing's closed. Next, June.
Introductory number 20-2021, proposed amendment to 278-3A9B to exempt elevated walkways or accessways, including stairways built by an individual property owner for the purpose of non-commercial access to the beach, calculation of height of a structure and permitted coverage. Legislative intent: to exempt walkways or accessways for the purpose of non-commercial access to the beach from calculation of coverage, and to amend permitted coverage to be consistent with other proposed amendments to the code.
Public comments? Board comments?
Yeah, I would just like to see that they be limited to four feet in width. I realize that's the DEC's ruling on that, but I think that if we limit it to these walkways to four feet in width, we won't get involved with people building decks and sitting areas as well on these walkways.
So if I could address that, Mr. Mayor, Trustee Graham, the same provision that limits postman's walks to four feet would also cover this. So you can rest assured that your concern has been addressed.
Okay.
All right, any other comments? Any motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed. Next hearing, June.
Introductory number 21-2021, proposed amendment to Chapter 104 Code Enforcement Administration to increase the permit fee by 100% whenever the work subject to a permit has been started prior to the issuance of the permit.
Any public comment? Joe?
To be brief, I applaud the effort to acknowledge that building permit obligations are often overlooked, but doubling the fees, I don't think is going to have any impact on people's doing that. We need, the reference was made to whether or not we have a community of law abiders or not. I think there's, my observation is, we have a lot of, whether it's deliberate or accidental, a lot of conduct that does not conform with the requirements, and rather than marginal increases in the fees, we need to have a comprehensive approach to enforcement, including fines, corrective work, and time schedules for such compliance. And I'm not sure if this is the appropriate context to handle it, but we should not be addressing this by selling indulgences. We need to figure out how to impose enforcement.
If I may, thank you. This is a drop in the bucket. I'll say, I mean, short of being able to put someone in jail, just kidding. It's really not going to do a lot, and I do agree with Joe. This isn't a, you know, if there was a, if you could set a fee, people would pay it anyway. I think what we're doing here is attempting to align ourselves with other municipalities. Not that we necessarily have to do that. It's kind of just a slap on the wrist and better than nothing.
So, Tom, what other municipalities around us have this provision?
East Hampton Town does, I know. I know Sag Harbor does, just to name two. I'm not...
I think Southampton as well.
Southampton, yeah, I'm not 100% on those.
So all of our neighboring municipalities or neighbors have this?
Some do, yes, yes.
Thank you.
And it's fair to say, Tom, isn't it, that this is just really one more arrow in the quiver? I mean, you know, it's just one more tool that you can use, right?
Yeah, yeah. No, that's very fair to say that, Vinnie. It's, I don't know, it's just... Yeah, I mean, to write it, you know, for this work that happens oftentimes, and to, you know, do a court appearance, and to, you know, have it go to the prosecutor, and it goes to the court, et cetera, and then to have it, you know, bargain down to nothing in the time it takes us to write a ticket, for example, this is just like, okay, here's your permit, but you're going to pay double. You're going to pay double.
I think it also would act as a deterrent. Somebody might think they have a small project to do, maybe we don't need, we can get by without getting the permit, and if they get caught, they're going to be looking at double the permit. Similar to it, if you use parking tickets versus a handicap parking ticket, parking ticket's $80, or handicap parking ticket's $250, it's a deterrent to keep people out of that spot. I would say it's a deterrent to get people to comply to the building permit.
Yeah, a minimal deterrent, but...
Can't hurt, Joe.
Yeah, yeah.
Agreed. So, all right.
I have a comment on this, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I know you're surprised by that. I think we could make it more than 100%. You could make it four times. I mean, make it, make it hurt. And also, I think that we should put something in that a contractor who does work without a permit, knowing that the permit is needed, you know, you can put a sanction on the contractor as well, a financial penalty.
The lawyers have to pay, too.
John Tarbet again. So, I totally applaud, and I think there may be a better way to go about this. The cost of a building permit application is supposed to be reasonably related to the cost of review. So when you start to talk about charging for a building permit as a way of penalizing a taxpayer, I think maybe you're mixing apples and oranges. I would go about it by simply saying that, and I agree, there should be a penalty for starting construction without a building permit, but I think that penalty should be on the enforcement side, and not trying to retroactively increase the building permit application fee, because that is, by law, supposed to be reasonably related to the cost of the administration, the review of the permit.
Mr. Tarbet, isn't, though, what our building inspector just said, the basis for that, right? So it takes him time to go out, inspect, write the summons, appear in court. So by doubling the fee, there is a very rational relationship between the penalty and what's being provided, or what it's costing the public.
Some of our building permit application fees are $20,000 and $3,000. So is it $60,000?
Do you know how valuable the time of our building inspector is? Please don't demean him, sir.
I would agree with you on that. We have the best. I just think that maybe the way to go about it would be to put on the back end and penalize, you can raise your penalties to cover for all those expenses. I'm sorry. It's just something I've noticed for years and years, that the cost of building permit application fees and their relationship to the actual administrative review. So it's just something I've always thought about, but I would just put it on the back end and just fine people more if they start construction without a building permit.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? All right, can I, motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, hearing is closed. Next here?
Introductory number 22-2021, proposed amendment to zoning, Chapter 278-6, parking requirements, to provide a waiver of parking requirements for workforce housing constructed in close proximity to mass transportation facilities. Legislative intent: the village board finds that there is a need for workforce housing throughout Suffolk County, the town of East Hampton, and the village of East Hampton. However, the costs, both financial and otherwise, to providing such housing are prohibitive. One of the major impediments are the cost of parking improvements, which are compounded by the current definition of intensification. This amendment seeks to address such issues and encourage the development of workforce housing in areas near mass transportation facilities, commonly referred to as transportation-oriented development, where the need for a vehicle and parking is diminished.
Any public comments? Phil?
Philip O'Connell, 132 Newtown Lane. Thank you, Mayor, members of the board, and I also appreciate all the hard work you've been doing. I'm in favor of workforce housing. I do have several concerns, because parking is already a significant issue in the village. I think mass transit needs to be defined. Is it a 500-foot quadrangle from the train station to the jitney, to free ride, to across the bus stop across the street from the middle school? So that needs to be defined. I think the intention was the railroad station, and if it is the railroad station, then it should be from a point, you know, whether it be the southeast corner, or the waiting room, or wherever, so that we can actually measure. There's also significant potential for redevelopment in the village on some of the rather larger parcels. The waiver of the parking requirement should be limited to one workforce housing unit. What I don't want to see is a, something gets redeveloped, they add three, four, five workforce housing units, and then somehow there's no parking requirement for the whole project. That's one of my concerns. So if that could be clarified, I'd appreciate that. Also, I think we need to add the definition of workforce housing somewhere in the code, because I couldn't find it in the code. And I think the $20,000 fee is really a pittance in comparison to what the cost per square foot of land is.
That's been eliminated in the final version, so. That's not in the final version.
The $20,000?
Right.
I think the fee should be higher.
Okay.
So, but thank you. Thank you.
Bring it back and make it higher.
Did you guys define mass transit in the final version?
Listen, I'm happy to address that, if the board wishes me to. I mean, I'm the dress person of that language, and, you know, mass transit facility has a commonly used term. And I've had the privilege of litigating statutory interpretation in all levels of the courts of this state, including the highest one, the Court of Appeals. And what I can tell you is, there are certain rules that are used in statutory construction, if a court even has to do that, engage in that act. And the first thing is that words are given their common meaning. So, you know, a mass transportation facility is exactly that, a bus terminal, a train station. Those are mass transit facilities. There may be something in the future that may also qualify, so that the language is flexible enough to accommodate that, but it's also restrictive enough to limit it to those types of facilities right now.
Okay, so if that's the common interpretation, then they would be able to do, that would give the store owners, the landlords, the ability to add an additional unit, an additional affordable housing unit, over a store?
If they're within 500 feet and they meet all other qualifications and requirements, yes.
Right, so you're between the jitney and the jitney stop and the stop across...
The jitney stop is not a mass transportation facility.
Okay, but the stop across from the middle school is.
Right, the train station is.
And the bus stop?
It's not a bus depot. A bus depot is a transportation facility.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought you said bus station.
No, no, that's okay. And thank you for the opportunity to clarify that. I appreciate.
All right, great. Thank you.
Any other comments? Joe?
I don't want to miss my last opportunity to damage my knees.
You've got one more.
So just, I think the reality is that while we do have a train station, we don't have mass transit at this point, and I think that until we do have regular train service, the parking provisions relating to workforce housing, which I support conceptually completely, should be done by special permit, as opposed to, so that you can look at the case-by-case example and make sure, for whatever uses, there's going to be adequate parking.
John?
John Tarbet again. I do support the law. I probably would have gone further and just said that you can do workforce housing without having to comply with parking above any commercial building. Again, my main concern being that we just don't have any housing for people out here. The second thing is just the pure economics of it. If you think that, you figure it might cost you $250,000 to build an apartment for somebody, that you might be able to get, let's say you got $2,000 a month, so you can get $24,000 a year, it would take you a long time. There's actually no real financial incentive to build workforce housing. So to the extent that this board can help alleviate some of that, you know, let's not, let's try to work with someone redeveloping a commercial property, as opposed to working against them. There's just, there's very little financial incentive to actually build this housing. So to also make them try to comply with parking, you're never going to build a workforce housing if you have to comply with parking, because you're going to put that instead into the commercial part of the building, where you can collect the ridiculous rents that you can collect on Main Street. So to the extent that commercial buildings, if you really want to do workforce housing in the village, I think any commercial building should not have to comply with parking for the workforce housing portion of that, because, again, there's no financial incentive to developers to redevelop these properties and provide that housing. That's my comments. Thank you. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, everybody. Tom Cooper. I have property at 26 King Street in East Hampton and also at 106 Newtown in East Hampton Village. I'm a 12th generation resident here and went to high school and everything, graduated. I'm just speaking to the, I'm fully in favor of this new proposal. I, I do believe that we have a finite amount of piece of property here in East Hampton. We don't have the property to necessarily be able to build a workforce housing. We've always, my whole life, we've always complained, we don't have any housing for the locals and we don't have any parking or, or traffic, right? Every year we talk about how bad our traffic is. That's a conversation every tumbleweed Tuesday. So I would say that to incentivize people that can develop a piece of property and put workforce housing in there, it makes complete sense. I don't, I don't see how it hurts us in any way to help, you know, promote that is a good thing, I guess. All right? Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else? Board?
Where are they going to park? We don't have, you know, up island, they have large municipal parking lots at the train station. We don't have that luxury. So where are the workforce people going to park?
We could certainly utilize the parking lot in Osborne that we spent $1.1 million on that nobody uses. We can park them in there. It's pretty close to the train station.
We also have parking down past Fresno. Would that's parking, correct?
That's true. So we have the parking along Railroad Avenue. They could park there.
Long term.
Because they'd be village residents and they would, could park there for up to seven days.
I just somehow think that, you know, again, we need to provide parking. We have a deficit according to the VPS of, and, of 2,000 spaces in the village.
We're never going to fix that.
Well, there are ways we could help address that.
Diagonal parking, are you referring to?
I don't, I don't know that that would give us enough parking.
A joke, exactly.
I think that we, I'm all in favor of workforce housing. The only problem is there's, you know, nothing affordable about the village.
We're trying to help with this one, so just taking away the parking restriction will help create something. It's not that you're going to have 100 more cars. It's not going to happen.
I, I'd also like to comment that it's, it's only within a certain radius from the transportation center, so.
Transit station.
So this does not open up to a large amount of, of real estate at all, and it is an industrial area more than maybe downtown is. And just to piggyback on my last conversation was that I would really like to try as much as we could to provide some housing, and it's not going to be perfect. I mean, we can try, but, you know, if you want to get some workforce housing in or housing for your kids or housing for someone, something's got to give. And, you know, we've reached that point right now. So, you know, for a very limited amount of real estate in our village to put this through, I think makes sense.
And the 500 feet, that's from, say Pleasant Lane?
From the train station.
Yeah, the train, I know it's 500 feet from the train station, but so that encompasses what area, Mayor? From Pleasant Lane to Race Lane? Mayor?
Whatever 500 feet is, Rose.
Well, how many properties does that affect?
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't count all those.
Well, remember, they're mixed-use properties as well, so the law specifically speaks to mixed-use properties, so it's a very limited amount. I mean, I think it's a handful, but I can't say that I know the, the exact number.
The other thing that should be noted, I think Kathy or Village Preservation Society brought it up about creating workforce housing. We're not doing that, and we're piggybacking off the town, so we're not going to be, you know, recreating what the town already has.
Yeah, and if I can address that comment, because it was a, something I meant to address before, the term workforce housing, excuse me, is already contained in the code. So that's a term that's not unknown to the code and not already being interpreted by the village.
We, we also approved a, a piece of property in that area for workforce housing, and I believe waived a lot of the parking as well. Bill, you might remember this more, but we've done this already, and I don't think there's any issues with that.
Yeah, the lumber lane, Trunzo, the Trunzo project, which we're all aware of, that was the initiator for a code change that waived the park, parking fee, the variance fee. So it required them to obtain a variance, and then the variance fee was waived. This simply waives the, the need to get a variance. It's presumed that the variance would be granted, and it, this waives that, you know.
Keeps it out of the ZBA.
Yes.
So we've set our own precedent with this in the same area.
Any other comments? All right, motion to close?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? All right, our hearing's closed. Final hearing?
Introductory number 23 dash 2021, proposed amendment to 267 dash 4A Vehicle and Traffic Parking Prohibited in Designated Locations and 267 dash 7A Vehicles and Traffic Parking Time Limited in Designated Locations to address parking and traffic flow issues on Fithian Lane.
All right, any comments? I have received.
I think you have a hand up.
Yeah, Mike. Oh, I'm sorry.
Couple of comments.
My name is Mike McManus. I'm a 25-year resident of the village, live on Fithian Lane. And first of all, I'd like to say, I apologize, this is the first time that I've commented, but the depth of the comments from everybody else has really been appreciated, and the work that you've been doing, I think, is also appreciated. I think it's wonderful to have fresh eyes looking at things that have happened in the past around the village. And the one comment I'd have to that is that, in my experience, it's important to be fast, but it's better to be right. So I encourage you to spend the time where you have to on some of these issues to make sure that we're not going back a year or two years from now to fix the things that we didn't really think about long enough. Leave that judgment up to you. The one great thing about it is I think we can learn from the beginning of this meeting from the poem with regard to Mayor Skidmore, Sandy's grandfather. And the great benefit is that you all will find a place in heaven from the work that you're doing here today, and now I understand why. With regard to Fithian Lane, it's a unique spot, as you know, it's a one-way street. Right now on Fithian Lane, there are 12 to 14 parking spaces on the street by Citarella and a parking lot for Citarella. Think about the other side of the street as it exists right now in reality. There's trucks, delivery trucks along there all day long. There are people that are stopping to let their loved one go quickly into Citarella's and get something because they're going to come right out real fast, but they're not, and they're parking there illegally for a period of time. There's also double parking by people that pull up, can't get one of the 12 parking spaces, and they're waiting for somebody to run in quickly to Citarella's. The effect of that is the backup on the traffic that's coming around the corner from Main Street onto Fithian Lane. That's a real, real dangerous spot. People are coming off of Main Street, taking a right, and all of a sudden, there's a pileup of cars on Fithian Lane. The other thing about Fithian Lane is it's a one-way street by law. It's not actually a one-way street. There are too many people that go down Fithian Lane, realize they missed the parking space, at Citarella's, turn around and despite the signs, which thank you very much, there's a lot on Fithian Lane, and as a resident, from time to time, I have to stop people. And my first question is, which of the seven signs did you miss? Some will come from Egypt up Fithian Lane to go into that parking lot. So you've got people going the wrong way on one-way street, and you've got congestion on the corner that exists now. So to fix a problem, you have to solve the problem that exists. Part of it is legal parking, part of it is the reality of Citarella's and people that are going to just pull up there and trucks that are delivering. I appreciate your listening to the comments, and thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
There we go. Can't breathe with these. We've been living on Fithian Lane. I'm sorry, my name is Mitten Wainwright. I live right across the street from the McManuses, up from Jacques and another person who had to leave early. I've, we've lived there 40 years. If you, and I thought, well, let me just see what it would be like to be somebody parked on the other side of Fithian Lane. So I stopped to chat with Jacques, parked on the other side. I could not have opened my car door safely to get out, to run over to Citarella for a cup of coffee. The traffic zooms past you, and I don't know if you ever heard the crunch of a car coming up, not to mention the hazard to the person who's getting out, hitting the car door when it's opened up and a car runs into it. You hear it all over the village. It's, it's a frightening sound, and that's bound to happen because I couldn't get out of my car. The other is that the person who then does get out of the car has to jaywalk through this traffic coming down, trying to get the cup of coffee or the, the head of lettuce or whatever at, at Citarella, and they're set up to be a traffic accident. And as Mike pointed out, it backs up. Something that might I notice, you said the traffic flow issue. There's a crosswalk for pedestrians at the top of Fithian Lane, which probably half the people who are walking across don't even know that there's a street that they're walking across. They're on their phones. Could you possibly, in the traffic issues, paint a crosswalk at the top of Fithian Lane? It might slow down some of the drivers who are in such a rush. It might, it wouldn't affect the parking, but it might help some of the people who live there to be a little bit safer. And I think that we have other people who live on Fithian too who realize it's just a dangerous spot up there, and to add people parking, getting in and out of their cars, somebody is going to get hurt. We also have people who are elderly on Fithian. We have one person who's recently had a stroke. He's in a wheelchair now. He can't actually, with his helpers, navigate the narrow sidewalk that runs along the side of the parking lot. It's very cracked, it's very uneven. His caregivers need to walk him on Fithian Lane up to the point where he can get to a viable sidewalk. So another piece for safety and traffic flow might be to fix that sidewalk. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi, Stacy Stowe again. Just wanted to say, I don't live on Fithian, but I'm frequently there as a shopper and with walking dogs, with visiting guests, with little kids, and I've almost been hit, and my dog has almost been hit a number of times, the turn that people make the right onto Fithian to cut through to avoid the traffic that you hit on CV, near CVS. It, it, they turn so fast that if there were cars there, I think it would just be, you know, park there, I think it would just be a disaster. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to add that this was something that I asked the chief of police to do, was to go out and look for areas that we could add parking. I think that area was identified for three spaces. This was not initiated by anybody other than us, so since the, I'm hearing a lot, obviously from the residents on the street, you know, we'll obviously going to take that all into consideration. This is not, in my opinion, worth three spaces, so. Anyone else? All right, can I get a motion to close?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed. Is there any interest in taking a break, or do we want to just keep moving through? All right. So let's, let's, let's go to resolutions, and then we'll go back to presentations so we can get everybody out of here if people want to leave. So let's start with number, start with number one, June. And then we'll come back to the presentations.
Number one, approve claim vouchers for the month of August.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Approve budget transfer schedule reference number 15 and 16 to close the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Approve claim vouchers for the month of August.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Approve warrants as listed.
So move. Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Approve departmental reports.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Adopt a negative sequa declaration with respect to introductory numbers 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 22 of 2021.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Adopt introductory number 16 dash 2021 as local law number 19 dash 2021, amending Chapter 278 to clarify the definition of non-conforming buildings, structure uses and lots, and permitted enlargements, reconstructions, structural alterations, restoration or repair of same.
So move.
Somebody second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to ask on each one, so just be clear. Passed and carried. Sorry, Jim.
Sorry. Adopt introductory number 17 dash 2021 as local law number 20 dash 2021, amending Chapter 278 to repeal certain limitations on permitted gross floor area.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
I am not in favor on procedural grounds. I'm in favor of the, of what it, what we're doing, but I think it should be held for another meeting for a vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All not in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Adopt introductory number 18 dash 2021 as local law 21 dash 2021, amending Chapter 278 to exempt handrails less than 12 inches wide, which are required by any New York State statutes, codes, rules, and/or regulations from the calculation of the height of the structure.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All not in favor?
Not in favor.
Passed and carried.
Adopt introductory number 19 dash 2021 as local law number 22 of 2021, amending Chapter 278 to add E accessory dwelling unit.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All not in favor?
Not in favor on procedural grounds, should be held for another meeting.
Rose?
Yeah, I agree with Trustee Graham.
All right, so let's, let's do a vote.
And I wasn't done speaking, Mayor, but this is significant enough to.
I'm not, I'm not asking for commentary, I'm just asking for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All not in favor?
Not in favor.
Passed and carried.
Adopt introductory number 20 dash 2021 as local law 23 dash 2021, amending Chapter 278 to exempt elevated walkways or accessways, including stairways, built by an individual property owner for the purpose of non-commercial access to the beach, calculation of height of a structure.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All not in favor? Unanimously in favor? Passed and carried.
Adopt introductory number 2021 as local law 24 of 2021, amending Chapter 104 Code Enforcement to increase the permit fee by 100% whenever the work subject to a permit has been started prior to the issuance of the permit.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Adopt introductory number 22 dash 2021 as local law 25 of 2021, amending Chapter 278 to provide a waiver of parking requirements for workforce housing constructed in close proximity to mass transportation facilities.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All not in favor?
Not in favor on procedural grounds, more discussion.
Rose is in favor. Four to one, passed and carried.
Adopt introductory number 23 dash 2021 as local law 26 2021, amending Chapter 26 Vehicle and Traffic to address parking and traffic flow issues on Fithian Lane.
So move.
Second.
I am not in favor?
I'm not in favor based on the public comment.
All right, so you have a comment, Rose?
I said I'm not in favor based on the public comment from the residents on Fithian, as well as there was some concern about emergency vehicles getting through as well.
All right. All in favor? Is anybody in favor? All not in favor?
Not in favor.
Okay. It's unanimously not passed.
Adopt twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two tuition aid payments of $750 for the following six dependent children of village employees. Cameron Downs, James Foster, Molly Memme, Lilia Schaefer, Tia Weiss, and Danielle Wilson.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Notice to bidders for the cracked ceiling, seal coating, and infrared patchwork with the bid opening to be held at Village Hall, eighty-six Main Street, East Hampton, New York, on September tenth, 2021, at 2:00 p.m.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Notice to bidders for the Herrick Park design with the bid opening to be held at Village Hall, eighty-six Main Street, East Hampton, on September fifteenth, 2021, at 12:00 p.m. noon.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just to confirm this, the southeasterly part of the park that we're putting the RFP out for from the LaGuardia Design?
Yeah.
Marco, is that correct?
That's correct.
Which is the tennis courts and the playing fields.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Approve the $9,723.81 quote from Fabtechs to refurbish DPW truck number nineteen, and that would be off new Rochelle contract number fifty-three fourteen.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. I just want to compliment Dave for doing an outstanding job with the, the fleet you were left with. It's really, it really looks good.
Thank you, Mayor.
I compliment you on that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Approve the $10,857.20 purchase of one stainless steel salt spreader off Suffolk County Brake Service Sourcewell contract, as per Dave Collins' memo.
So move.
I have a question about this, Mr. Mayor. We, in September of 2020, we approved a $17,000 item for a salt spreader. Was that never purchased?
Yeah, we have, we have two new salt spreaders. This is number three. We have, we have three traditionally in the, in the fleet.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Accept the $66,075 bid received from Anova Furnishings for trash and recycling receptacles.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Just like to point out that this will actually put recycling bins on Main Street and Newtown Lane at our beaches, which have never been done. This will actually be recycling bins that will be picked up, and the product will be brought and actually recycled. So we're really proud as a board to be able to do that. It's costing a lot of money. And on top of this, there's a monthly fee for us to do it, but it has never been done in the village, and we want to make sure it gets done correctly. So thank you all for that.
Approve Rosemar Contracting's $299,960 quote for the rebuilding and paving of further lane between Old Beach Lane and the town-village line.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Approve the $8,800 purchase and installation of lockers at the DPW facility, and that would be off Bosie's contract.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Approve the $33,913.76 purchase of one Ventrac mower tractor and the $5,000 purchase of a finished mower attachment off Sourcewell contract, and that's as per Dave's July 21st memo.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Accept the resignation of part-time paramedic Olivia Michelson effective retroactively to July 5th, 2021.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Employ Sebastiano De Felice as a 2021 lifeguard at 1650 hourly, and that's as per Jamie Teles' August 9th email.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Approve the SQL server monitoring service with GeForce data for the contract period of September 1st, 2021, through August of 2022 at the cost of $6,985.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Adopt resolution number fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-one to standardize the purchase of the Teak Park benches.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Adopt resolution number fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-one to accept and acknowledge the gift of the Centennial Rock from Baron Bistrin of Bistrin Gravel.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. What's the value of that rock?
Dave?
Do we know? Just curious.
Dave, how much is a rock worth?
How much does it cost to move it?
It's a big rock.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure these days.
Enough. Thank you, Mr. Bistrin.
Go ahead. Thanks, Barry.
Approve the disposal of two obsolete, non-working HP Laserjet Enterprise M607 printers from Village Hall.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Notice to bidders for storm drain cleaning with the bid opening to be held at Village Hall, eighty-six Main Street, on September 10th, at 2:00 p.m.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. All right, so.
Wait, wait.
Oh, you got an add-on. I forgot.
An addendum from the beach. I'm sorry.
Add-on from the beach.
Approve retroactively to August 1st. JP Ammonen has passed the Ocean Lifeguard test, and they're appointing him as lifeguard at 1650 an hour, and employ Olivia Plankster as a lifeguard at the rate of 1850 per hour.
Wish to accept. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Thank you.
All right, so now we have to go back to our presentations. If anyone needs to exit, now's the time. Not you guys, though. All right, so Brad, when we have, the first up is going to be Chief Turza. Why don't you step up to the podium? You're limited to three minutes.
Starting now.
Especially Chief Tracy, he's definitely limited to three minutes.
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Mr. Balladron. For the record, my name is Gerard Turza Jr., and I'm chief engineer of the East Hampton Fire Department. I'll be very brief. I need some fire trucks. In the simplest form, that's what I'm here for today. I was before the board back in November, ten months ago, and I explained what our capital needs were, which were spaced out over a five-year period. After much deliberation internally, after discussions with the village administrator, the village treasurer, we realized that that mindset, that traditional mindset of replacement and the schedule therein is outdated. It does not keep pace with the challenges that we're faced today. Sitting here today, we had three alarms while I was in this room. And seven hundred and thirty calls now. The fire department, we don't just cover the three and a half miles in the village. We cover thirty-one square miles total. We're protecting a population which our estimates are somewhere between eighteen and twenty-two thousand people. Obviously, COVID was pretty big for us. We are running nonstop. That is adding excessive wear and tear on the vehicles. We'll go back in time a little bit to each of the vehicles that we're looking at. We met with our primary vendor. We've standardized the fleet across the board so that we're working on the same types of parts, the same type of equipment. It just makes the end product a lot more easier to work with and efficient for our members. So we sat down with our vendor. They offered some municipal programs to help us kind of catch up with, with our infrastructure needs. We looked at a leasing program. We sat down, we crunched a lot of numbers, and we realized that in the long run, we'd be paying tens, if not almost hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest. I think the bond rate was like three and three-quarter percent as compared to, if the village were to go out and bond, we'd be looking at a little over one and a half percent. So we've got the practicality of the truck, but we've also got the financial responsibility to the public as well. And we really started to look at some different things with that. Through the efforts of Mr. Cullum, we're able to participate in what they call the Houston-Galveston Agreement contract. And at, we've saved some money, some substantial money in years past with one of the last apparatus that we purchased in 2009. So we looked back through our trucks. When I was here before in November, our carol ladder truck was out of service. We thought it was going to be for a few weeks. It came back March 16th. That is the largest capital asset that the village owns aside from real estate. That's well over a million dollars. To replace that truck, we are looking at a price of 1.798320. Before I go any further, I do want to commend, we commissioned several committees to look at the different trucks that needed to be replaced. And the men and women on those committees did a phenomenal job in fairly short time putting this, this project together. They came from a lot of different backgrounds. It wasn't just, oh, that looks like a nice truck. Let's go buy it. They went actually out to other departments throughout Suffolk County. They looked at different things. They asked a lot of really good questions because whatever we buy today has to serve this community for the next several years. And with not only the serviceability, we've also got the financial responsibility as well. Every one of us are taxpayers. So we look at our ladder truck to replace it. It's 1.798. That's a state-of-the-art truck. And that will certainly suit our needs. We look at, let's see, our hose truck. We're looking at a price on that of 757,289. Now with that, the truck carries 4,000 feet of five-inch supply hose, which is critical for us in areas of northwest that do not have hydrants yet in them yet. If we were to go out and purchase the hose itself, we're running about a thousand dollars a shot. That's $40,000. We purchased it as part of the, the truck, we're allowed, under the HGAC contract, we're allowed X amount of percent for equipment. So that $40,000 now parlayed to $24,500. So we really started to get into the breaking down of the price per trucks. Our brush truck, our brush truck is tired. It's a 1968. It, our last large brush fire back in April, as soon as the truck got in the woods, it broke, necessitating five other brush trucks to come in and back us up. That forced us to take a really hard look at that truck. And our truck committee on that one spent a lot of time going back and forth with the vendor because it's a truly customizable piece of equipment. They've come up with $395,000 for that truck. We're looking at it. It's got an increased tank capacity, four-wheel drive. It can be used for different foul weather evacuations. We're looking at a storm right now. We've got larger areas in the slosh zone. Also, it gives us the four-wheel drive capability. We go to a lot of these houses northwest where the driveways are three, four, five thousand feet long, winding into the woods. The conventional engines and apparatus can get hung up in there. This truck can go through. It's got a larger tank capacity, much larger tank capacity. And it's got a new, modernized pump that we'll be able to use for a number of different applications. We're looking at replacing Engine 915. As you all know, we have the new substation up in northwest, a few miles up the road. We're required to keep an engine there, a tanker, and we also keep our brush truck in there. We have to have certain types of apparatus in that building in order to get the ratings that we need for the insurance. We've saved the taxpayers in the northwest protection district tens of thousands of dollars in some instances on their homeowner's insurance because now they have a firehouse within five miles, which is pretty critical. We want to take Engine 915 from headquarters, as is, put that in the substation. Currently, we're rotating. So we're taking an engine out of here. We're putting it up there, three miles up the road. We want to be able to have the capability to keep an engine there full-time and also keep the rest of the fleet intact here. Because again, we've got a bigger, bigger protection area. We've got the village, we've got what we call the water road district as well and the outlying areas in northwest. So when we look at that truck, we looked at that truck coming in fully equipped. We're looking at $823,482 on that truck. So you look at the numbers and you scratch your head. I know I was scratching my head. But when we sat down, we realized that there's a number of things involved, and I'll touch on those momentarily. Last but not least, my heavy rescue truck. This truck was supposed to have been replaced the 2019, 2020 year. Then it was the 2020, 2021 year. When I was lieutenant in charge of the Heavy Rescue Company in 2012, I asked that this truck be replaced. And now here it is, nine years later. I'm still waiting for, to get this truck replaced. We paid $111,000 for it back in 1995. It's almost 27 years old. We've certainly got our money's worth out of it. So we look at all the total on those trucks. It is pretty staggering. We're looking at about four and a half million dollars. On the bright side of it, if you can look at it that way, is that we've saved well over $40,000 with discounts off of the collective agreement that we are a part of. We also need to get an air filling station. Right now, when we go to a fire, we use our SCBA. When we're done with the SCBA, they have to be filled. Right now, we're waiting on a vendor to come out. He's coming out of Ridge, and they'll fill the bottles. So there's a timeframe involved. I'm looking at a big storm. If I get something in the middle of that storm, I've got to rely on a vendor being able to get out here to us, especially in the wintertime. I had one fire a few years ago, and it took him four hours to come out and fill my bottles. That's unacceptable. So to purchase a system similar to what they have in the, actually better than what they have in some of the departments around us, $82,139. That's a system that we could put in-house. We can fill our own bottles here. We can also, if need be, fill other bottles for other agencies as well. And that's something that, you know, when we compound out the amount of money that we're spending on, on filling with a vendor, over time, it just, it makes perfect sense to have our own system here.
Just to interrupt.
Yes, sir.
Isn't it, is there a way you can share this with the other local departments where you could put it like in maybe the training facility?
The other departments, the other departments are all purchasing their own.
Why is that?
Because at the, at the end of the day, it just makes the best financial sense to have your own system in place. You know, if we're going to be spending, you know, $20,000, $25,000 a year to have someone come out and fill them, and for $82,000, we have our own.
No, what I'm saying is, you have that training facility. Couldn't you set up this filling station there and have Sag Harbor, East Hampton, Amagansett Springs all use that facility?
They're all, they're all, they've already all purchased their own. Because then you're up there, and then whose responsibility is it, and who is there last? This, it also enables us to track our assets. Each one of these air packs, the cylinders, rather, they've got to be tracked. They've got to be hydro-tested. This system will help us. It's got a barcode addition to it, and it keeps tracks. You're the one who filled that bottle last on this date, this time. So if there's a problem, we can go right back to the source, and it helps us with our record-keeping, which has been done rudimentary, I'll be quite honest, for the last several decades. So we've got that. I need a boat.
A boat?
I need a boat. We, several years ago, the village, in their infinite wisdom, got rid of, I'm not, 58 haterists, that's okay. I'll, I'll deal with it. But we have no capabilities for any type of water evacuation. We have a dive team. We have a very good dive team. We've responded on, in the last two major dive incidents in the last two years. We rely on our partnerships with Ocean Rescue and Marine Patrol, but we have no capabilities here in the village. If we have to get people out of their house in a slosh zone, the notion of throwing somebody over our shoulder or carrying them out, it just, my back is okay, but we've got some people that their backs might not be good. A boat is a perfect addition for what we need here. We had one a number of years ago, and it was sold at auction, unfortunately. It can also be used for ice rescue. So there's a number of different uses for the boat. Boat motor trailer, the one price that we were able to secure was about $26,000. I know I am confident that we can find something a little bit less on a government contract. One of the problems is that, we see it with the trucks, is that the. One of the problems is that, we see it with the trucks, is that the vendors are all changing. Everyone, the economic outlook on a lot of different things in industry are a little, a little askew from what we would think. To go a little bit further, I need three new chief's cars. We blew the motor in my car this year, my car is one of the two newer cars. I was responding to a call and the motor blew. By the grace of God and the skills and partnerships we have with the folks over at Buzz Choo, they were able to make this car work, otherwise I'd still have no car. The car broke the 4th of July weekend. So they were able to get that thing repaired and back to us. The other assistant chief's cars, his car has more miles, his car is, we're waiting for that thing to blow at any time. And the second assistant chief is still driving around in the 2010 hybrid vehicle that should be off the road. So we're looking to switch from the Tahos, which are almost impossible to get, to the crew cab pickup trucks with the cabs. That saves us a little bit of money actually, because they are on state contract, they are a little bit less money than the Tahoe. But when we get the Tahoe, now we have to buy the box that we can put our turnout gear in, because we're not allowed to have our gear in the vehicle, in the closed cab with us. The pickup truck, we don't have to worry about that. So that's savings of about $5,000 to $8,000 per vehicle. And it's going to enable us to carry more equipment, which as a result of COVID, we ended up having to carry more personal protective equipment, additional SCBA, our breathing apparatus. You know, that's, we're kind of maxed to the room in there, in those vehicles. So we're looking at, we're looking at a substantial equipment list. It makes sense if if the village is potentially looking at some type of a bonding package for infrastructure that we move now. The fire apparatus, we're, we're under the gun a little bit. The pricing that we've got is only good for 30 days, because the industry is so volatile. The price of steel is driving everything through the roof. Every year, they would typically have a 3% increase, this year so far, they've seen upwards of six. After October 1st, they're expecting additional increases. Why is this happening? Well, because we're looking at emission standards have changed across the board. The state of California adopted some new emission standards back, back in the fall. 14 other states, including the great state of New York, signed on to it, cutting, pledging for zero, zero emissions by, I think it's 2050, but by 2030, which is only nine years away, they're going to 30%. They're using 2024, 2027 as benchmarks. This is driving the industry crazy, they're all on a panic mode. And that parlay's into us. They're seeing a lot of municipalities such as us in this situation that we're in, that we have to replace a lot of apparatus. They're seeing them do it all in one shot. You know, we look, traditionally, we used to look at replacing an engine every 20 years. NFPA standards, standard 1911, gives us 15 years. And that's important also, because we're looking at this, this type of project, we had, I had someone come in and appraise the trucks, someone that's in the business, come in and appraise the trucks. Tell us what we have, what's our equity, if we were to get rid of it. If we were to get rid of our trowel ladder truck, let's see here, we are looking at, we could possibly get somewhere in the neighborhood of, let's see. So that truck is a 2002, and it came in here originally as a demo, and it gets used. And every year, we're spending on average of $40,000 to $50,000 a year in maintenance. The last shot was, was well over $40,000. Right? So we can put that truck up for sale, listed at 155, they feel that we can get somewhere between the 135 and 140 range on it. So we get a little bit back on our initial investment. We look at our hose truck, which is our oldest in the fleet, 1997, 25 years old, there isn't much market for it, we might be able to get about $18,000 to $20,000. We look at our rescue truck, it's going to be 27 years old, we might be able to get $17,000 to $20,000, and we paid $111 for it. We look at the chief's cars. We could turn around and sell each of those two Tahos as-is condition, and get roughly about $32,000 for it. Now, on state contract, the Tahos are $37,000. So when we look at the bigger picture, it doesn't make sense to hold on to these things for 10 years like we were doing, and driving them into gurshell. Let's use them for their serviceability, and pass them on, and recoup a little bit of money. It's like I said, the project was, is pretty bold to look at, but it was pretty, I think it was pretty well thought out by all the parties. This Cummings, the treasurer, we've had a number of conversations, as well as with Mr. Balladron, about, you know, what makes economic sense.
I got three other presentations I've got to.
I'm wrapping up.
All right, thank you.
I've got a fireworks show to put on. Any questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, thanks, chief. Sorry to cut you short. Who's next?
Me.
Two minutes.
A summary would be good.
Mine's quick compared to the chief's. Mayor, thank you for the comment earlier. Without this board's cooperation, we couldn't have done what we've done in the past year or two years. We've come a long way, and recently, working with my trustee liaison, trustee Melendez and administrator Balladron, we've been able to purchase a sweeper, a garbage truck, much-needed pieces of equipment, a couple of salt spreaders, and with my former trustee liaison, trustee Brown, who was with me for the first two years of my, my position, we've refurbished three trucks, we replaced dump bodies on two trucks that just were inoperable, and we got a standby generator at Central Garage, which was out of service. So we've done well. And all these items were off the five-year capital plan. So the administrator had come to me and asked me to look a little deeper into the five-year plan, see what we need, and this is what I'm here to just brief you on quickly. Medium-duty fleet, those are the small dump trucks that are on the road every day, they're at the end of their useful life. We also have a flatbed that's a converted ambulance, and these trucks are 13, 14, and 29 years old respectively. So that's what we're looking to replace those with, and with a heavier-duty version, going from a 10,000-pound truck to a 19,500-pound truck, which will service better and last longer, given the, the type of service that we put these trucks through. They would all be equipped with plows, the two dump trucks additionally with sanders, and that would be, take care of the medium-duty fleet. And then moving toward the light-duty fleet, we currently have four pickup trucks, three-quarter ton pickup trucks. We lose one of those trucks to the, to the beach crew for the summer. One truck is committed to the mowing crew every day, so it only leaves me two pickups for daily use in the fleet to accomplish the daily task. I'd be looking to add two one-ton pickup trucks, again, increasing the, the capacity of the, the type of truck that we have been purchasing to a heavier-duty truck, hopefully that will, that will last us longer. Those two truck, those two one-ton pickups would be equipped with plows and lift gates. Lift gates are like the number-one crew-requested item. So, and lastly, I'd be looking at one heavy chassis with central hydraulics and a plow. It's just upgrading our heavy fleet, which is, we're, we're at 20-plus years average age of our heavy fleet, and that would add a new platform to run one of the new, the new spreader that trustee Graham had asked about earlier. And basically, we're looking at, I'm just in a nutshell, we're looking at about $108,000 for eight different vehicles, two spreaders. It would increase the available plows to us by three, and by two, two spreaders, everything four-wheel drive. And I have a, I have a brief, I'll, I'll email you a, a summary of the estimates for each, each of the type of vehicles, so you have it, and we don't take much longer here. But, you know, as you're, as you're aware, DPW for a long time was held off on new purchases that started back around 2009 in the economic downturn. The, the village chose to purchase used trucks at that time. We are still operating and repairing these used trucks. So we're, we're very much at the time where, where the fleet, I've done what I can with the, with the, with the trucks that we can refurbish, and in an attempt to gain us five years. But the medium-duty fleet, the light-duty fleet has to be addressed pretty quick. And then going forward, you'll see in the synopsis that I'll send you is the five-year requirements going into the next, my projections for the next five-year capital estimates. So you'll have that to, to refer to also. All right? And that pretty much concludes the briefing.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that brings up Mr. Ajax for the.
These trucks is Billy need.
You're not speaking, right, chief?
I was, I'd like to say.
I don't think you made the agenda.
I left the boat off.
All right. Good afternoon.
Pull attention.
I'm not here to ask for money, so it's a change of pace. I just wanted to provide, I asked the administrator if I could provide the board with a brief update, so that everyone knows what's, what's happening with the Cove Hollow stormwater pipe. This is a, this was a synopsis that was put together for a presentation to the town board, and I just thought it'd be easy for the, for the trustees to have something to review and have an idea as to where we stand. A very brief background, the pipe was constructed in the 1930s, it's over 7,000 feet long, and it begins at the 114, State Route 114 railroad trestle, extends completely down Cove Hollow Road, and it terminates in Georgia Capone, the Georgia Cove section of Georgia Capone. And it, it picks up stormwater along the entire route, and all the stormwater eventually ends up in Georgia Cove. So this project started by the village about four years ago. We originally had Drew Bennett complete the original assessment, and interestingly, Drew's father worked for the county, and he actually had, he said, I think I have plans of that in my basement, and he actually had plans for part of the pipe in his, in his basement, which is very unusual. But regardless, Drew put together a plan, we took that plan, and we brought it to the town. We requested funding, funding from the Community Preservation Fund to continue analysis. We included it in the village's water quality improvement plan, and we received funding to complete additional analysis of the, of the pipe. And this is a synopsis of what that analysis found, and the engineer provided recommendations on how to move forward. I'll skip through the current conditions, everybody can read that on their own. In addition to, you know, analyzing the pipe, which involved driving a little ROV-type device through there, and took video and camera images of it, we also did soil investigations and soil borings. They observed quite a few deficiencies and problems with the pipe. You can see that there are some actual photographs in here that, where we show the sedimentation. It's filling up with sediments. We have a spot where the DOT is helping us fill it up with sediments by dumping gravel in it, at a spot where there's a collapse in the pipe. We've got tree roots going through it because of its age, and it's very porous concrete now. There have been some penetrations by utilities, which were not permitted. And we have a map that was put together by Eastern Environmental Solutions, which shows the entire length of the pipe. It shows all the inlets, where we have issues, and where, you know, some of the problem, problem areas are. The engineer also looked at ponding around the area, where we could alleviate ponding by, by adding that to the pipe, and came up with a series of short-term and long-term recommendations for things that we can do to, you know, fix the conditions. We want to get the stormwater off the road, but we also want to do it in a way that we reduce the amount of stormwater that's entering the pipe, deal with it in other manners, and then eventually try to deal with the end-of-pipe treatment by putting in some kind of a, you know, constructed wetland or bio-swell. And I, I won't read through all the short-term and long-term recommendations, but one of the conceptual designs that was developed is at the intersection of 114, where the former dairy farm is, which is now the Riverhead Building Supply Site, that's a known problem area for stormwater. And the one idea is to actually take stormwater that's being generated in that area and pipe it in the opposite direction, try to get it across 114 and into the state's drainage sum that already exists. So we, that's one, that's one option that we have, that we're going to look into investigating further and vetting that with the state DOT. And then the other conceptual design, which is the second-to-last page, is the Cove Hollow Road End, where right now is a sea of asphalt and some, that lawn area, there's pockets of native vegetation. The, the general concept so far is to formalize the parking area a little bit, reduce the length of the pipe, and also create sort of a bio-swell, a natural filtration process, which would help cleanse the stormwater before it, if, if it, before it enters into the Georgia Cove section of Georgia Capone. So again, these are just concepts, we're going to further refine them, and we have a series of priority action items that we're working on, both cooperatively with the town and the village and all the stakeholders. It's a really good project, because it, the, the pipe crosses multi-jurisdictions, and we've been working really well together, the town and the village. You know, the DOT has been not as cooperative, but we're working on it. So that's just where it stands. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions?
Yeah, Billy, how much, what percentage of the water that enters the pipe goes into Georgia Capone? And how much of it is leached out before it gets there?
I can't answer that, I don't know. The leaching of, the leaching out, there's really no areas of, if, if any water is exiting the pipe, it's, it's exiting the pipe because it's either cracked, or there's roots, or there's a penetration of a utility. There is no areas where the pipe is diverted into stormwater drains or anything like that, which is something that we're actually, that's one of the pilot programs we're going to do, is try to tap into the pipe and see if we can alleviate pressure by putting in joint, you know, diverting some of the water into storm drains, intentionally doing that. But right now, I'd say 100% of it is intended to be directed into Georgia Cove. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, what do we have next?
Done.
Oh, good. So we're going to, we're going to close the meeting, but we're going to go into executive session, and if I have to come back out, Jamie, I'll notify you.
Chief Tracy wants to talk.
No, 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 next meeting, next meeting. Next meeting, Mike, let's, let's, it's enough today.
No boat?
No. All right? So we're going to, we're going to, we're going to go into executive session, if I have to come back, Jamie, I'll let you know. So can I get a motion to close the?
So move.
Meeting.
A second.
All in favor?
All right.
Meeting's closed.